All right, I'll call our meeting to order. This evening, council is meeting electronically and I hope that this doesn't be a habit here in the near future, but so I'm calling a meeting to order. There will be no pledge of allegiance this evening and with that I'll ask for a roll call.
Steve Clements.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
John Bozard.
Here.
David Glave.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
And Justin Rock.
Here.
All right, no changes to the agenda except for the removal of the pledge. We have a consent agenda with two items, the regular minutes for our July meeting and approving a taxi business license application by Alpha Taxi. If anyone wants to remove anything from the consent agenda, let me know now. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Well, I just wanted to ask a question about the taxicab.
I think Chief Bell is here, so that would work.
Want me to ask it now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I noticed that on the back that one of them has had insurance approval, but the other one hasn't. Or is it only one car that they are wanting to be in the taxi service or is there two?
The application originally listed two vehicles, one of which did not have insurance on it. So I made notes there and I communicated with the applicant and let them know that we would not be able to approve that vehicle as part of the license. The one vehicle that is still listed on there is insured and was at the time of the application. So that's it's just one vehicle.
Okay, so he's starting with just the one vehicle right now or she?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a correction on the minutes.
What's that again, Gary?
I have a correction on the minutes.
Okay.
It would be on page nine, resolution adopting housing production strategy. In the second paragraph, it indicates a date of December 2021, which probably isn't accurate. I imagine that would be 2020.
I'm assuming that Stacy can take care of that or Sandra.
Yeah, we can make that change.
Thanks for catching that, Gary.
Yeah, so there would be a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. I think would be the safest way to do that for that correction.
Anything else?
I don't know that it matters. There is this place where Emmett Cornford's name was misspelled as Corford without the N, but maybe just a minor modification there.
We'll fix that too. Oh, yeah, I see it.
Thanks, Dave. All right, entertain a motion as amended, please.
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second, all right. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Steve Clements.
Yes.
Larry Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glave.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
And Justin Rock.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda passes. Next item is public comments. Robert, I understand we have some public comments to read into the record and I'll leave it with you at that.
And Stacy's going to go ahead and read those. One of the submissions from Mr. Ralph Edwards included a five-page attachment, which was emailed out to the city council earlier this week. So you have that. We're not going to read the attachment as part of this. It would exceed the three-minute time limit in any way. So I'll let Stacy go ahead and read those comments into the record now.
Okay, we're just going to go ahead and start with Ralph Edwards's email since we just referenced that. It has come to our attention that the city of La Grande has re-imposed at the library, pool, city hall, etc., an indoor mask mandate following the guidelines of our illustrious governor. Her orders are for state agencies and her executive branch only and their customers as laid out in her formal declaration dated July 30th, 2021. And then he references a link to the guidance in his email. None of our local or county facilities like the pool, library, or city hall are state agencies and therefore none need follow this guidance. Why does the city think the good folks of La Grande need to be subjected to another mandate when none of the institutions where it has been put in place have anything to do with state agencies? There is no science to back the issue of even the state's new mandate, let alone one for a small rural community like ours. This letter is to let our public officials know we do not approve of this decision. I believe it is the city council's responsibility to explain to the people it serves why this decision was made and using just following the science is no answer. Please respond to our inquiry during the upcoming council meeting. And then he references the file that Robert had also mentioned in his email. Hopefully it will help educate the council and the real science at hand concerning this matter. And again, that's from Ralph Edwards. The second email was received from Cindy Edwards and it begins like this. Dear Robert and council members, I recently became aware that the city of La Grande has decided to revive mask mandates in all city facilities, including the library, city hall, and the city-owned pool facilities, echoing Governor Brown's mandates for all state agencies. Why is the council doing this to our populace? What science supports mask mandates? I'd like to point out a few key facts refuting the general assumptions apparently made by the La Grande City Council. One, the state-level mandate applies only to the executive branch consisting specifically of governor's office, Secretary of State's office, state treasury, Justice Department, and Bureau of Labor and Industries. Two, our local city's facilities are not state agencies and therefore are not subject to the governor's mandates. The city of La Grande is free to make common sense decisions based on local conditions, decisions that impact local businesses, residences, residents, and users of local facilities. Three, according to Dr. Fosse, speaking for the CDC, off-the-shelf masks are not effective at preventing spread of any virus. In June this year, Fosse said, "The typical mask you buy in the drugstore is not really effective in keeping out a virus, which is small enough to pass through the material. It might, however, provide some slight benefit in keeping out gross droplets if someone coughs or sneezes on you." In other words, the masks used by us commoners shield one's face from sneeze spray like covering your sneeze with a bent elbow. In assessing the question of why we need to do this, I generated more questions than answers. What actual need is masking intended to fill when using over-the-counter homemade non-medical masks? What real documented problem backlog or other measurable issue does mask-wearing alleviate and how? What data supports requirements to wear masks in city of La Grande facilities? Has either the death rate or infection rate from COVID-19 increased as a result of goings-on at a city-owned facility? How many spreader events did city-owned facilities experience during previous mask mandate periods? How many spreader events have city-owned facilities experienced during the break from masking? At what types of city-owned facilities did spreading events occur? What unique characteristics are present in the facility or facilities where spreader events occurred compared with other city facilities? What other options are available to prevent further spreading events in that type of facility? What is the impact of the surge on mortality rates in the area? There were no COVID-19 deaths reported in the last two months. What data is available to demonstrate that mask-wearing directly curbs any changes in infection or mortality? Where was the data gathered and under what conditions similar to or different from the conditions in La Grande or Union County? Are the hospital beds filling to an unimaginable capacity? Grand on hospitals not reporting a capacity issue with COVID-19 cases? If there is no anticipated capacity issue, then why mask up? If capacity is concerned, then where is the evidence that mask-wearing will alleviate the patient load? Note, breakthrough or reinfection cases are very mild. Also, according to the CDC and WHO, the virus is naturally losing its brutality as those viruses do over time. Based on what I've seen and heard around the valley and in the news, the decision to reinstall mask mandates is based on fear rather than data. Fear of the unknown number of variants that may or may not emerge. Fear of people making common sense personal choices that may not agree with the city's politics. Fear of losing state funding. Fear of not knowing who is or isn't vaccinated. Fear of knowing the vaccinations may not be effective. The fears build on each other and the list goes on. Likewise, whether intended or not, the council's decision to meet online rather than in person at city hall this week appears to be based on fear. Fear of catching COVID from each other or fear of a full house of residents and businesses who are feeling the impact of frivolous edicts. Appearances are important. I believe most people agree this is a contagious virus and respect the idea that protecting oneself is important. I trust people to make decisions about masking and vaccinations that make sense for them. Yet I also believe government mandates intended to control citizens' behaviors or to mandate medical decisions that should be personal decisions must be clearly supported by science and reliable data. The city of La Grande masking rule appears to be supported by neither. I urge the city council to withdraw the mandate and follow real data-supported science. I also encourage everyone to work from a perspective of logic and faith rather than a position grounded in fear. And that is the end of Cindy Edwards's letter. The last letter that we received for public comment is from Tim Coza. Mr. Strope, I have a couple of questions I would like addressed at this week's city council meeting. Beginning with why the mask mandate has been reinstated in some of La Grande indoor public facilities. The governor did not order any public facilities to reinstate the masks. She only told her executive state agencies to do so. I have researched what an executive branch's state agency is and in no way does it include public pools, libraries, and city halls. So the governor did not order the mandate. Secondly, I would like to see evidence on paper that the virus spreads more quickly at the pool than anywhere else. If such scientific evidence can be provided and is trustworthy, then I will accept the mandate. However, I have been able to find any evidence supporting that at all and therefore I believe that the mask mandate at the pool is ridiculous. I look forward to watching the council meeting tomorrow night and awaiting your response to these questions. Thank you for your time and that is all I have.
Thank you, Stacy.
Robert, would you like to comment on those, please?
Sure. The city has since the beginning followed the guidelines from the CDC and Oregon Health Authority. And we've also mirrored what the state has done in regards to their offices with the city facilities. And the CDC is recommending social distancing and masks. The return to requiring that in the city-owned facilities does not extend to private property. It does not, it's not a city-wide mandate or requirement. It only affects the city-owned and operated facilities indoors. And those that prefer not to wear a mask can still conduct all of the business with the city without coming into the facility, just as we did for months while the facilities were closed. This was done in an abundance of caution based on those guidelines. It was not a politically motivated decision. It was based on what we were seeing from guidance from the CDC. And that's what the decision was based on. And I think it's prudent to do it until those, that guideline and guidance changes. I don't think that getting into a debate on specifics of science and what data is or isn't there is really a productive use of time. I think going with what the CDC and Oregon Health Authority is recommending does make sense for our community. You know, we're trying to do this to keep people safer. And I think in my view, if these added measures result in one less person becoming infected and becoming hospitalized, it's well worth the inconvenience of doing it. And so I think it's important that we take a leadership role in protecting the community, our employees, and our citizens. And that's why we are going with the mask requirements until the CDC guidance changes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, this will go pretty quickly. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We do have Commissioner Scarfo here and perhaps he can comment a little bit on COVID in the county and maybe some more pleasant information.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and councillors. Maybe I'll start with the more pleasant information. Mira, as I don't know if you were aware, that we did reopen for non-motorized last week. We, with the weather patterns and a lot of people didn't realize when we closed it in the first place. Yes, we're in severe drought. Fire danger is very high, but we also didn't have any resources here in the county. They were in Elbow, the Elbow Creek fire or the Bootleg fire. And plus, we had no fuel at the airport. So very, very like a perfect storm, if you would. So that was the decision made. I know it was a very unpopular decision, but in my opinion, it was a very good one. And we just had to wait a week and the weather helped. Elbow Creek was, they're mopping up, Bootleg, we're getting resources back. We have fuel at the airport. So if a fire did happen, we could fight it. So today we decided to open up motorized for improved roads only. I know it's, I think it's only two roads up there and they're going to sign the rest of the unimproved roads. I still want to caution everybody, even though it's open, let's be, you know, let's be smart. No smoking. Oh, I'm sorry. And we are still closed for camping up there. So just, we're still abundance of caution up there and we're following ODF's ruling on that as well. And then, yeah, to start continuing on COVID, as we all know, and reading, hearing the public comments. Yes, our cases are rising. We were up to 20 a day. We got down to 10 and now it's kind of ping ponging back and forth. We would really like to see it around five where, you know, everyone, you know, please wear a mask. If you have underlying health conditions, if you're in a tough situation, please, you know, take care of yourselves. This morning, we had, it was brought up and I just received some more information. We were talking to emergency manager Vora, the hospital, we're in close contact with them. Carrie Brishadi, Public Health, we're in constant contact every single day. We implemented kind of a guidelines on where the county was going to go, kind of a stoplight, green, yellow, red. And depending on where our hospitalizations are at, is the, what we're weighing the most is where we're going, where we're going to be if, you know, if we do decide to go to a mandate, trust me, we are in bad shape. And right now, hospital is at capacity. We got the information this morning. The reason why we did this guidelines is because we've been asking for local control for the last year and a half and we finally received local control. So I figured, hey, we better have something in place in case something bad does happen. It's in place now and rumors on the streets. And I believe they're going to be true is the governor is going to get back in the game, if you would. On, I don't know what she's going to do. As you know, school mandates for masks, you know, things are kind of gradually, I saw the emergency, I don't know if she, it was an emergency declaration, but she did, health, the healthcare workers. She announced something today as well with that. So I believe we're going to see the governor maybe stepping back in to be continued on that. But I'll take any other questions if you'd like.
Matt, did you say the hospital is, and I know this is sensitive, relatively sensitive information and the hospital sort of keeps, keeps it close to their chest. Did you say that they were at capacity with?
No, they're okay. They're, they say they're not, they're not, I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke on that. They are under, they are, they are within capacity. How's that?
Okay, okay.
And that's what emergency manager Vora said to us at the meeting. I apologize if I.
Yeah.
Sounds like we are at capacity, yes.
Yeah. A little freaked out there for a minute, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, thank you. Anybody else questions for Commissioner Scarfo?
Can I just ask one? Yeah, so Matt, I know you said you're getting some regular communication with both the hospital and, you know, Carrie Brishadi and others. I know we get a lot of questions as city councillors on this. Would it be appropriate or possible to have any of that information shared among city of La Grande leadership so that it puts us in a better position to, you know, discuss this thing, these things with the public?
Oh, yes, yes, please. I, Robert Strope and I, we've been, we've been talking as well. But yeah, I would love to have you at the table. I know we had the La Grande City Police Department at the meeting we had last week. But yeah, I would love to be able to share whatever, whatever you guys want. We're going to try to, I think, we're going to try to have more mayor meeting again. We're going to fire those up. So yeah, more communication, the better.
Are you guys publishing, Matt, are you along those lines that Dave is asking? Are you guys sending out any regular emails, kind of updating information to people in the area? And if you are, maybe we can get on that list.
Oh, for, oh, for sure. If we start doing it, we'll definitely, definitely do that. It looks like we're probably, I don't know if we're going to fire back up the jick or not, but it's, it's happening really quick this week. And like, I just received some information literally 10 minutes ago. And it's, the last couple of days have been a whirlwind.
Yeah, with, I think what throws us off too is OHA stopped reporting Monday, Saturday and Sunday. And so they lumped those cases in on Monday. And so we got the report on Monday of 41 cases, but that's, you know, average that over three days. It's, it's like 13 rather than 41 in one day.
Yeah, that looked very scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wish they would go back to daily reporting because I think that would, I mean, I agree with you. We'd probably need to get the numbers down, but to see 41 freaks out.
Oh, for sure. Oh, for sure. And that's, we don't want that to, we don't want to freak anybody out. We want honest and good reporting, but sometimes they're backlogged. I know Carrie Brishadi was saying they're backlogged reporting cases and they can only do it in the afternoons and it takes a couple of days, even testing's taking a couple of days again. It's, I hate to say it, but we're, we're, it's, we're almost back into it again.
Yeah, you know, if you, if you go solely on the numbers of daily cases, we're back where we were last June and July. We're pushing into that November, December numbers that we had. And that's, that's not good.
No.
And anyway, thanks for that information.
Oh, if you have symptoms, stay home.
There you go.
That's, that's the number, number one thing. If you have symptoms, just stay home.
Yeah, I think the other thing too is, is masks are not designed to protect you from somebody. They're to protect other, you from, other people from you. And at least that's the way I understand the use of masks. And I strongly rec, you know, encourage people to be wearing a mask wherever they happen to go. Because even if you've been vaccinated and you're asymptomatic, you can still be putting out a virus and you can, and you can still be putting, you're, the load is lower for vaccinated people, but you can still be on this Delta variant, you can still be infecting others. So any other questions for Matt on something maybe not COVID-related? Thanks for reopening, Mira.
Oh, yeah.
You know, people were pretty happy with that and I understand the resource needs. It's just a dry up there as in anyplace else and we don't need that to burn away.
Well, that was the, that was the problem. Everyone thought it was just because it was dry and it gets dry up there every summer. And we're just, but the fact that we had no resources and no fuel, if a fire did start, we were, we were going to be in trouble.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that dimension of it. Anybody else? All right, thanks, Matt. Appreciate your time.
Yep, anytime. Thank you.
Staff comments? City manager comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. I did not get the monthly report out this afternoon to the council for July, but you will see that. I'll probably email that out tomorrow. It's done. I just wanted the directors to take one quick last look to make sure that it's there. So you'll see that. Some highlights, the city has submitted the request for about $1.5 million in ARPA funds. So we have that in place and those will be deposited into our investment, state investment account. When those are released, that'll be the first installment. The next one will come in a year of the, you know, roughly $3 million of COVID-related dollars that we're getting. The work session scheduled for August 23rd on urban forestry, tree right-of-way enforcement. Stu has asked that we postpone that. So the council's next meeting slash work session on your horizon is the regular session in September. So you have the rest of the August off from a, an evening meeting perspective. We've got, we're scheduling interviews for the Economic Development Director position for the 23rd of August. So stay tuned on that, let you know how that turns out. Uh, let you know how that turns out. And I think that was the highlights that I wanted to cover. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start off real quickly, uh, and then we'll make a rounds. Um, you should be expecting from me an email the next day or two uh regarding the city manager evaluations. Directors have um, have prepared theirs and Gary put everything together for that, and so I will email that information to you all along with Robert's self-evaluation. Um, so you'll get that in the next day or two. And the last thing that will be in there, so you'll get Robert's self-evaluation, you'll get the director vows, and then you will get a form to complete the evaluation yourself. I'll give you a, a due date on it, uh, probably a week and a half or so. Um, we won't be meeting anyway until uh September, so once we've got things, uh, all responses from you, and we might wanna go ahead, Robert, and, and just plan on, on doing um um, your review uh at the September meeting, if that works for you. Okay, so I'll give you a due, due date on those. Uh, that's all I have for the moment. Uh, I'm gonna go in order of uh, have you, as you appear on the screen, so uh, Councilor Lillard, any comments?
I have nothing.
Okay, Councilor Meesner?
I have nothing.
Okay, uh, Councilor Rock?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Bozart?
Uh, just one thing. I'm glad to see the Second Street project finally completed, but I did receive a lot of inquiries and questions as to why it took so long. So I don't need an answer tonight, don't know how to answer that by no means, but uh, it's something maybe we could look into. I had mentioned it to Robert once before.
I thought that Just real, real quickly, we had, we had sent out an update via email, but Kyle is on the is, I see his box on here, so he could just real quickly hit a couple of the key parts to that. He's, he's prepared to answer that, so.
Yeah. Go ahead, Gary.
So uh, with the Second Street project, the main delays that we saw were actually one that you're seeing throughout the construction industry this year in delays of getting materials. So the first delay was concrete. We're currently under a concrete quota, so to say. So uh, Ash Grove is sending over the cement for making that concrete. Basically, they can only send so much to each county during each week. So uh, to get your guys to get concrete, they gotta be first in line, and they can only do so much. So they prioritize their, their projects as they go along, and sometimes we won and sometimes we lost. So the other piece that we at the initially thought is we wanted to get all that concrete poured before we paved the roadway. Now, the roadway's designed to take on those heavy wheelloads, but it's, it's really not a great idea to throw heavy wheelloads on a brand-new mat in 100-degree weather. They like to turn, they like to back up and forth, and it can really tear up your mat, so we really tried to get all that concrete done before we paved. The last piece is our supplier who uh sent us the asphalt had a really hard time getting a crusher in this year to chip up the rock. So basically, we were on hold until he was able to actually, he didn't get to go with his normal guy because he was booked up for another few weeks, but he got somebody in to crush the rock to actually make the asphalt. So in the end, the short answer is, we, we ran up against a lot of material shortages. Uh, as soon as we got those materials in, we jumped forward as quick as we could. Uh, we still, you know, initially in the uh, the meeting that we had with the neighborhood, we said, you know, it's gonna take us at least two months. That's if everything goes right. We anticipate we're gonna be done by the end of July. We did hit that goal, and I do wanna say that everyone who lived along that stretch came forward and asked us to wait longer to pave cause they really didn't want traffic coming back.
Is that good, John?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I can answer some questions now, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Councilor Howard, anything?
Uh, we had a brief chamber meeting um about a week ago, and we're kind of revising some language on the mini grants that go out for festivals and things like that. That'll be rolling out, and there'll be a report to council sometime soon. I think that was sort of the crux of it. That was the biggest thing.
Okay, thank you. Finally, Councilor Glaib?
Maybe just a brief update from the airport. Um, they, uh, some things actually were happening ahead of schedule there, so uh, I think they have a little bit to finish in the project, but uh, looking good.
Good. All right, um, before I adjourn the meeting, I just wanna announce that we're in a, I, I, I'm assuming that we'll take a very brief break. Um, it won't be too long, uh, you know, maybe 30 seconds or so unless Brent tells me otherwise. Um, and then uh, after we adjourn that meet, uh, this regular council meeting, we will very quickly adjourn, I mean, um, um, begin our, uh, our Urban Renewal Agency regular session. So with that, I'm gonna, uh, I'll meeting and uh, give it about 30 seconds, and then we'll come back as the agency. Anytime. Okay. I see Justin has gone dark as the same as, as uh, John is as well. Nicole is back. So we'll give those two a chance to get back up to this, get the video back up, and then we'll start. Looks like John's coming back. Justin, are you around? There he is. All right, we're all back. Uh, I'll call to order the Urban Renewal Agency regular session, uh, announce that um the, the agency is uh, conducting this meeting via uh electronic means. And ask for a roll call, please.
Steve Clements?
Here.
Gary Lillard?
Here.
John Bozart?
Here.
David Glaib?
Here.
Nicole Howard?
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Here.
And Justin Rock?
Here.
All right, uh, no changes to the agenda. Uh, we have a consent agenda, one item, and that is the uh minutes from our July 7 meeting. And um, unless there are any changes uh in those minutes, I'll can, uh, ask for a motion.
We're gonna accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozart?
Yes.
David Glaib?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
And Justin Rock?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, public comments. Any, any public comments for the Urban Renewal Agency, Robert?
No, Mayor.
Okay, uh, no public hearings, no unfinished business. We have one item of new business, and that is uh a resolution confirming authority to sell property at the Technology Park. Robert, report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the agency. As part of the conditions of sale for the lot that the agency was informed that we had a full-price offer on was documentation of the authority uh for the file. And the simplest way to do that is through a resolution that identifies uh, that I do in fact have the ability and authority to uh sell that particular property. This property is located in the La Grande Business and Technology Park, but it's not in the same footprint that is uh required to meet all the CCNRs. Uh, so it's right on the corner of the Gekler, uh, by the dental lab. Uh, this is uh the same property that some of you will recall uh was going to be the uh CrossFit location. That project was uh funded at a less than requested amount at a call for projects a few years ago. And ultimately, they did not move forward with this, with this transaction or accept the grant. So we had this property listed at $75,000. We did get a full-price offer, that was communicated to the agency right away. And then during the uh budget committee for the Urban Renewal Agency, I made the uh, agency again aware and the uh budget committee as well about the uh accepted offer for the sale. And once the uh agency passes this resolution, we'll provide that to the uh title company. They'll record the sale, and we'll receive the proceeds from the sale. I'll be happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Yes, I have one question.
Go for it, Gary.
Robert, is there anything you can tell us about uh what the project is, or is that not for public consumption?
I, I don't have anything that I can share yet, President, Councilor Lillard, I apologize.
Okay.
Okay.
John?
Yeah, it, it's sort of hard for me to give the authorization to sell unless I know who it's going to. I don't care what the, you know, what's going in there, something that, I don't know. We should know what it is, I think.
Well, we can, we could, yeah, we can tell you who it is going to. I thought that was identified in the staff report. Yeah, in the resolution, the, the buyer is Ricky Finn-Britten. And this is actually uh someone that had reached out and contacted Christine uh who is using, uh, looking, interested in using Ignite uh for some things. The specific, what they are going to, what project they're putting in there, uh, that has not been disclosed.
Okay.
Yes, we're not, we're not keeping secret who the buyer is. Uh, they just have not shared specifically what they intend to do with the property. But it will have to be something that's a permitted use.
Well, I was gonna say, it has to be consistent with the use of the area, and it, and I'm assuming the buyer understands that piece of it.
Yes, yeah, the, the big difference with this, this particular piece of property is it's not subject to the same CCNRs as the other land that the agency and UCEDC owns. So it's zoned uh business park, so the permitted uses and the conditional uses are the same. It's just that they don't need to meet the other requirements of the homeowners association, if you will.
But why is that? That they don't have to meet the other CCRs?
Because the, the property that was uh included in the CCNRs uh didn't cover this one, it didn't cover uh UPS, it didn't cover the dental lab.
Is that because those pieces were available before the larger area?
I, I can't speak specifically to why that is. Uh, that all transpired uh several years ago before I got here uh when that subdivision was put in place and all of the improvements were made.
Okay. Any other questions for Robert on the, on this element? This item. Okay, uh, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the resolution confirming the district manager's authority to sell agency property located at 205 Prospect Drive be read by title only, put to a vote and pass.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, so we got a motion from Mary Ann, a second from John. Any other comments or questions? You know, I'd like to, I, I'm just gonna say that I, it would really be nice to know what's going in there. Uh, the owner is one thing, um, it'd be, it'd be kinda nice to know, but if that's the, the direction that we have to work with, I suppose it's okay. I, I, it's, it's good to see the property being sold um and, and getting uh back into private hands. Um, that's good. The sooner we know what, what's gonna go out there, I'd, I'd appreciate that, so.
Yeah, when they, when they submit their, their site plan stuff, uh, uh, then we'll be able to share that information. And again, I don't know what, I don't know specific, I personally do not know specifically what they're envisioning.
So Sandra, could you read the proposed resolution by title only, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution of the City of La Grande Urban Renewal Agency, Union County, Oregon, confirming the authority to sell agency property and declaring an effective date.
Okay, well, we've had a reading, and we have got a motion, a second, and a reading of the title of the resolution. Uh, roll call, vote, please.
Steve Clements?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozart?
Yes.
David Glaib?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
And Justin Rock?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, um, district manager comments?
Yeah, um, yeah, just please come in this week and sign the resolution so we can get that over to the title company so that we can get this recorded and get those dollars
Okay, very good.
If you would, but that was the only thing.
Agency members, I'll start with uh, um, Mr. Lillard?
I'm good.
Uh, Mary Ann?
I'm good.
Justin?
No, thank you.
John?
I'm really good.
Good, good. Uh, Nicole?
I'm good.
Dave?
No comment.
Okay, and the only thing I have to say is, I sure hope the weather gets cooler soon. Not that it has anything to do with economic development, but boy, it's getting rough. And with that, my friends, I'm adjourning us for this evening, and um we'll see you all in a few weeks. Uh, look for email from me tomorrow, and make sure you get in to um, to sign the resolution as soon as possible. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.